Good evening, everyone. We're just waiting for Brown.
Good evening, everyone. We want to welcome you to our September 24th, 2020 City of Palaca Commission Meeting. This meeting is being held virtually pursuant to the Governor's Order, Executive Order Number 20-69, which has been extended on a few occasions. At this time, we're going to go ahead and have our Pledge of Allegiance and our Invocation. Commissioner Borum, do you mind leading us in the pledge and the invocation at this time?
Please have everybody stand, please, by your head. Dear God, thank you for this day. Thank you for your grace and your mercy, and most of all, your unconditional love. Would I ask you to protect us and guide us in this meeting as we conduct the order of business for our city? We ask that you give us what we need in order to make it pleasing unto God. We ask these things in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
We'll now have our roll call. Commissioner Borum.
Present.
Mr. Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner McCaskill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown is in transit, and Terrell Hill, I'm here for the record. We've got four or five members present with one in transit, and we do have a quorum. Moving forward to our next item on our agenda, which is approval of the minutes from the September 10th meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Motion to approve.
The Commissioner Campbell?
Yes, sir.
Most to approve by Commissioner Campbell, is there a second?
My second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item two of the agenda, which is public recognition and presentations. First up is our presentation for student of the month. And this is student of the month for September 2020. And so, Commissioner Borum, you're with me today. You got any special words you want to give the kids?
No, we just want to thank the kids for all the hard work that they're doing to earn this recognition. And we want to continue for those, we'd like to ask those students continue to work hard and the sky's the limit.
Thank you, and we'll do our virtual handshakes. And so, are we ready for the presentation for student of the month? Student of the month for September 2020, Brown and Pierce Elementary. Lisa Robinson, fifth grade, with her Seminoh shirt on. Congratulations. CL Overturf Junior Sixth Grade Center, Caleb Cooper. Children's Reading Center Charter School, Cameron Toby. EH Miller School, Stephen Everett. James A. Lone Elementary School, Colleen Wilkinson. Jenkins Middle School, Barrett Clark. Kelly Smith Elementary School, Lucille Strickland. Melon Elementary School, Jordan Brown, fifth grader. Mosley Elementary School, Deasia Atwaters. Palaca High School, Carly Drew. Pennell Baptist Academy, Jordan Traber. Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences, Lauren Novak. Putnam Edge High School, Navea Hamilton. And that concludes our student of the month. To all of our students, we know you're watching. We wish that we could have you here in person. But I always want to leave you with the one thing that I've learned. And it's something that I was taught by Ms. Green in our third grade class at Mosley Elementary. And we started every day out by simply saying, "I am somebody. If my mind can conceive it and my heart can believe it, I know I can achieve it because I am somebody." So you guys are somebody special. You're destined for greatness. We are so proud of you and the work that you're doing, even during these trying times of the pandemic. And we are excited about our new leaders in this community and what you guys are going to bring in the future. So regardless of whether we have a pandemic or not, we are just excited. And we want to thank you for representing Palaca and Putnam County in making education important to you. And so again, continue to set the example, and don't let anybody stop you from being your best. So again, guys, just thank you for all that you do. And also, we want to make sure that we thank our parents. Because this is a testament to parents being involved in the children's life, having external partners who are involved in those children's life. Because it takes a village to raise a child. And I see parents on here on Zoom, parents, if you can just wave, because we want to give you a cyber applause right now for the great work that you've done with your young folks. And also, we want to make sure that we also recognize the educators. Because if it's not for your sacrifices and the love that you give these children and the patience that you exude, they would not be recognized today. And again, to all those external partners, thank you again for the great work you've done, our young people, and congratulations to our honorees. Next up is a presentation from the Florida League of Cities Municipal for Municipal Achievement Award, Aaron Russell.
Hello, I have to ask, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Hello, everybody. My name is Aaron Russell. I am the Membership Programs Coordinator at the Florida League of Cities. For those of you who may not have heard of the league, we have been the united voice of city government since 1922. Our goal is to serve the needs of cities by providing city officials with staff and advocacy, training and expertise, and by standing up for the rights of government closest to the people, governments like the city of Palaca. So I am here today because it is my honor to announce that the city of Palaca has been selected a winner in our statewide annual competition called the Florida Municipal Achievement Awards in the Florida Citizenship category. At a time when cities across the nation are trying to find ways to bring people together, the city of Palaca has been a true leader in this arena, and they've done it through, you have done it through your race issue study circles program. The city of Palaca's Race Issue Study Circles began when Mayor Hill recognized the need to discuss the racial divide that the nation was and still is facing. So on October 28th, 2017, over 200 citizens met at City Hall to discuss race relations as a community. As stated in the submission, this first meeting gave birth to the idea that sharing collective experiences could bring empathy, understanding,
Hello, everybody. My name is Aaron Russell. I am the Membership Programs Coordinator at the Florida League of Cities. For those of you who may not have heard of the league, we have been the united voice of city government since 1922. Our goal is to serve the needs of cities by providing city officials with staff and advocacy, training and expertise, and by standing up for the rights of government closest to the people, governments like the city of Palaca. So I am here today because it is my honor to announce that the city of Palaca has been selected a winner in our statewide annual competition called the Florida Municipal Achievement Awards in the Florida Citizenship category. At a time when cities across the nation are trying to find ways to bring people together, the city of Palaca has been a true leader in this arena, and they've done it through, you have done it through your Race Issue Study Circles program. The City of Palaca's Race Issue Study Circles began when Mayor Hill recognized the need to discuss the racial divide that the nation was and still is facing. So on October 28th, 2017, over 200 citizens met at City Hall to discuss race relations as a community. As stated in the submission, this first meeting gave birth to the idea that sharing collective experiences could bring empathy, understanding, and community togetherness. Thus began the program Race Issue Study Circles, which we are here to recognize tonight. The program had three objectives, three main objectives, I'll say. The first was to give participants an opportunity to gain insights and friendships that they may not have gotten elsewhere. Secondly, for participants to gain empathy, understanding, and community togetherness through open and honest dialogue. And lastly, to inspire other community organizations to create life programs on the discussion of race relations. And the Race Issue Study Circles has grown to include over 2,300 participants since its inception. The Florida League of Cities has been recognizing outstanding citizens since 2009 with three prestigious, prestigious, excuse me, awards annually. We have the City Spirit, the Environmental Stewardship, and then the award I am here to present to you tonight, the Florida Citizenship Award. And this award is a testament to the leadership of the mayor and the commissioners, your city staff, and perhaps most importantly, the willingness of your residents to come together and to talk about difficult issues and to find ways to support and learn from one another. So the Florida Municipal Achievement Award is the highest award that we give to Florida cities. The city of Palaca's nomination was outstanding, and your efforts in engaging your citizens is unlike others. So in addition to the presentation tonight, Palaca has been featured on our website, in our social media, and you will be showcased in our statewide Quality Cities Magazine. And this, if we were in person, this is the part where I would take the trophy and I would hand it to Mayor Hill or one of the commissioners, but the trophy is on the screen tonight, so I will pretend that I am presenting it to you and handing it to you. So to conclude, I just want to say, on behalf of the Florida League of Cities, congratulations to the city of Palaca for the 2020 Florida Citizenship Award. Congratulations. I will do my silent clapping. Congratulations again, Mayor.
Thank you very, thank you very much. And this, this award is just, I think it's a testament to the work that this commission has done overall in trying to keep our community moving forward by addressing historic harms in order to preserve the future. We also will be remiss if we don't thank our Race Issue Study Circles LLC, which is the nonprofit organization which has worked tirelessly and which was birthed out of the events that took place. And so, within that organization, Kevin Schabur, along with Gay Esperson, my co-chair, on the RIS committee, they've also done a wonderful job throughout the community. They're now putting on virtual, they're putting on virtual circles at this time. So if people are interested, you can go on Facebook to the Race Issue Study Circles Facebook page, and you can actually sign up for virtual circles or call City Hall at 329-0100. When we look at the things that are going on in this country at this time, I think it's just an honor that we are able to stand before the community in such tough times. Putnam County has actually gone through some very trying times in recent days, but we have to continually have the candid conversations about race relations and have those conversations and be willing to not win, but to gain understanding and empathy. And I think that's critical as we move forward. We also want to thank Vice Mayor Brown and her efforts with her dinner with the Cock Program, which is something that has been, she's worked closely with Chief Shaw as well. And so, we're definitely excited about the continued efforts that are there. You know, Commissioner Borum and his community efforts as well, all throughout, just the council as a whole and the support that we've had as we move the circles forward. And so, we're just excited about what's coming up in the future, because every challenge creates an opportunity. And again, thank you to the league, to the league's leadership and the board of directors for the recognition for this great honor. Is there any comment? We have more comments from the commission.
I just want to just truly thank the mayor for his, his leadership and his commitment to the community to kick this Race Issue Study Circle off again, I mean, back off again in 2017. I really thank him for his leadership, and it has truly been a blessing to our communities. I just wanted to at least put that out there, and that's all I have.
So definitely, thank you. Thank you again, Ms. Russell, for presenting the award tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Hill and the commission and staff. And it's a great opportunity to be here virtually, and we're excited to see this program grow.
Thank you very much. Moving forward to our proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we have Ms. Lori Slaven from Lee Connolly House, and also our very own Shirley Edwards, who's our victim's advocate with the Palaca Police Department. And the proclamation is on my screen. Proclamation reads as follows. Whereas domestic violence is a crime that impacts all citizens of Putnam County, and it impacts its wide-ranging, taking a dramatic toll on the criminal justice system, law enforcement, the healthcare community, and society as a whole each year of Putnam County, as an estimated one in four women and one in seven men are victims of domestic violence, which translates to 13,100 individuals affected in our county, based on our recent data. And whereas it is vital for our community to support the victims of domestic violence and assist with their grave financial, physical, and psychological losses, to improve legal sanctions against perpetrators of personal violence, and to help the batterers learn their abusive behavior. And whereas Lee Connolly House is the only certified domestic violence center in Putnam County, providing 24-hour hotline, shelter, and other needed services and counseling to victims and their families, and has been awarded certification through Florida's Department of Children and Families. And whereas the Palaca City Commission endorses and supports all programs sponsored by the Lee Connolly House in its mission to provide shelter and support services to victims of domestic violence and their families, thereby assisting in the elimination of domestic violence in our community. Now therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palaca, Florida, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2020 is hereby designated as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Palaca. We urge all citizens to participate and plan socially-distanced activities benefiting the Lee Connolly House in its mission to provide shelter and support services to victims of domestic violence and their families, and support its goal of creating a community with zero tolerance of domestic violence. And witness whereof appear to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the city of Palaca, Florida on this 24th day of September in the year of our Lord 2020. Terrell Hill, Mayor. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Don't move, Mayor. Second.
There's a motion to second on the floors. Are there any unreadiness? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Again, let's give a virtual round of applause for our Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Ms. Edwards, I'll let you go first. You have any comments for us?
I truly just want, first of all, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I just was, first of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the commission for your continued support and the rest of the body here in this community and all the agencies that join this continuum of mine here at the Palaca Police Department. And also, last but not least, to my chief, Jason Shaw, thank you so much for your support continued here.
Thank you. Ms. Slaven, do you have anything else?
First off, let me start by saying congratulations on the award. That is an amazing thing for the city of Palaca and Putnam County, and you all deserve a big hand. So, so congratulations on that. And secondly, we just want to reiterate what Ms. Shirley said in that we appreciate all of your support. There's never been a time that I've reached out to any of you that you have not participated fully. Justin has embarrassed himself by coming to some of our events and dressing up and giving speeches and doing silly things, and we really appreciate him and all of you and the continued efforts that you all put forth to assist us in assisting our survivors. And Ms. Shirley, we couldn't do it without you and Chief Shaw. And I see that Mary Garcia is on here, which the Health Department is a wonderful community partner of ours that we could not do what we do without them. So thank you so much for your continued support.
Thank you.
I'm just going to say thank you. You're so welcome, and this is an incredible effort that involves the entire community. And I know this is not something that one can do by ourselves, and we appreciate the support of our Violence Intervention Program, but with all of your support as well.
Mayor Hill, you are.
I was muted. So I want to make sure that we thank all three of you for the work that you've done in this community and you continue to do in this community to try to make Putnam County be a community of zero domestic violence. We're a community of zero tolerance, and every day we want to work closer and closer to the point that domestic violence becomes a thing of the past and that it no longer exists in our community. And that can only happen by having community partners donate. It can only happen by having continued education for batterers as well as continued support for those who've been battered and been placed in those situations. And so, we want to make sure that the city of Palaca continues to be a partner. We want to make sure that our citizens are educated on what needs are there for Lee Connolly, and we just want to continue, we just want to continue to say thank you again for all your efforts. Anything for the commission? Any comments?
Yes, I would like to say definitely thank you for the Lee Connolly House and what it is that they do for our area. As stated before, I have a wonderful partnership work relationship with them, and the services that they provide are definitely needed within our community. And anything that I can do moving forward to helping the vision and the mission of the Lee Connolly House, please do not hesitate and contact me, as it would be a pleasure and an honor to be able to serve those people.
I think it's certainly a blessing to have an agency like that to serve the needs of our individuals who need those services. Many times, our community need to go, we have to go outside of the city of Palaca or the county of Putnam in order to get those type services. So we really thank you guys for being here, serving this community in this capacity. I would like to see y'all go away, because that would mean that we're, we don't have the issues, the social issues that promote the services that you all provide. So, but it's a bittersweet thing, by me saying that I would like to see you go away, but I know that's not going to be the case, and we want to thank you for all you've done for all of our community.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing that again, just thank you. Vice Mayor, I'm sorry.
I was trying, is my speaker on? Okay. I'd like to say thanks to those ladies, too, because people don't know all the time, don't realize what somebody that has been treated badly goes through. It may not even be a lick, it may be a word or words that have done it. And Ms. Garcia, Mary is everywhere. She puts herself, I don't know, she, I think she thinks she's cloned and she's three or four people, but she does a good, good job for her, and I want her and the young lady that does domestic violence for us does a really good job. I want to thank all of them for going that extra mile, because all of them do. Thank you so much.
Thank you for a job well done. Moving on to our next proclamation. Our next proclamation is for our Fire Prevention Week. And the proclamation, joining me with this proclamation is Captain Brett Myers. Captain Myers, are you with me?
Yes, sir.
Before we go into the proclamation, you got any words you want to give as it relates to Fire Prevention Week?
No, sir. It's going to be a little different this year with the trying to social distance and do all of the fire prevention with the kids at schools, but we're going to make the best of it, the best we can.
Okay, definitely. We appreciate it. And can you just kind of give a little excerpt of what historically goes on with Fire Prevention Weeks and the activities that you typically have?
Typically, it's more of a fire prevention month than it is a week. We visit a lot of local schools, elementary schools, daycares, as all the programs do. Most of their fire prevention stuff this week, we hand out coloring books, stickers, hats, and we try to really basically teach the kids some fire safety on how to get out their house properly, what number to call, what to do if they find matches and lighters, and, and show them the trucks. Of course, they all want to see the trucks and see the lights and sirens and all that good stuff. But this year, like I said, it's going to be, we already have some signed up. We've been trying to tell the schools and daycares that we need basically a parking area where we can spread some people out, where we can't get in the classrooms and be kind of like what we were, but we're still trying to make the best of what we got and still do all the prevention and teach all the kids all the fire safety that we can.
And I, and I'm definitely encouraged, and I believe that you guys will do a wonderful job in making the adjustment and continue to teach our young folks and also the rest of our citizens, fire safety and fire prevention as we continue on throughout the community. And so, we're just, we just want to say thank you definitely to the fire department and to all our first responders for the work that you do in this community, and definitely your efforts that you make as you deal with our youth and giving them the advice and setting the tone as mentors and examples of what should be done by our great citizens. So again, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And so, our proclamation reads as follows. Whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire. As four out of five fire deaths occur at home each year, US fire departments responded to 363,000 home fires in 2018, in which 2,720 people were killed. And whereas new homes are built with lightweight materials that burn faster in many of today's products and furnishings produce toxic smoke when burning, making it impossible to see and breathe. Residents should identify places like the kitchen in their homes where fires can start and eliminate as many and all hazards. Where properly installed and working smoke alarms in every sleeping room and outside sleeping areas cut the risk in half of dying in reported home fires. Residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan that includes a drawn map of each level of the home showing all doors and windows at least twice each year with family members and visitors are more prepared and more likely to survive a home fire. And whereas Palaca's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrences of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, Palaca's residents, including children, should be taught how to escape on their own, to take personal steps to increase their safety in homes. And once out, should stay out, never go back inside for people, pets, or possessions. And whereas the 2020 Fire Prevention Week theme, Cooking Safety, highlights this year's focus on cooking safety and preventing kitchen fires at home. Now therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palaca, Florida, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby proclaim the week of October 4th through 10th as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city of Palaca, and I urge all citizens to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of a fire or other emergency, respond when smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and to participate in the many public safety activities and efforts of the city of Palaca Fire Department during this weekend throughout the year. And witness whereof appear to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the city of Palaca, Florida on this 24th day of September, the year of our Lord 2020. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion. There's a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Brown. Is there a second?
Thank you.
There's a second by Commissioner Moore. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Let's give a round of applause for our Fire Department and Fire Prevention Week. Thank you again, Captain Myers.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Next up, in keeping with the theme of the Fire Department. Got our recognition of Chief J.R. Grimes, 16 years of dedicated service. Chief Grimes, are you with us?
Yes, sir. I'm on line with you.
So for those of you that know, Chief Grimes is going to, we'll call it, to the other agency in the county out on Krill Avenue. And we are just excited that Chief Grimes has an opportunity. To advance his career, but we're also saddened by the fact that he won't be here while he's doing that advancing. But we want to make sure that we just continue to celebrate Chief Grimes and his 16 years of service. Chief Grimes, our big shindig could not take place because of COVID, but we're gonna find a way to do something else special for you. But as, but for tonight, we want to make sure that we read the plaque that was presented to you on your last day, your last, your last day. And it says, "An appreciation to Chief J.R. Grimes, Palaca Fire Chief. Thank you for 16 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Palaca, Florida, September 16th, 2004 to September 16th, 2020." And if you know Chief Grimes and his dedication to this community. Chief was volunteering to stay throughout the weekend and extend his, his work hour if he needed to, just to help out for a few more days. But we're just, we're just glad to have had you for those 16 years. We know you're only going down the road, so you won't be far. And Chief, we just want to celebrate you at this time, just as we did last week. And thank you for the wonderful job that you did in leading our Fire Department. And so.
Thank you.
So to our, to our commissioners, Commissioner, do you have any other comments for Chief?
I would like to say thank you for your dedication to the city as well. Thank you for the times that you have taught me so much with regards to fire and its safety. And the operation of the Fire Department and being able to work alongside with you, alongside you. And some of the times where the citizens of Palaca needed us the most hurricanes and stuff like that. It was definitely an honor. I look forward to continuing to work with you just at a different, different level. Congratulations once again. Thank you for being who you are to this city and to this county.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, I like to thank, you know, I think this will probably be the third, the third departure for, for thanking the chief. But anyway, I want to thank him for his dedicated service for 16 years. I'd like to thank his family. For loaning him to us to provide the services to our, our great community, protecting them in every way, not only just households, but businesses, businesses as well. And, and so I'm going to miss him on those Christmas gifts, giveaways throughout our community. Going to miss him with the program. Hopefully, we keep that program that he has started in the school system. Just so many things that he's done throughout our community. We're going to miss him, but I want to continue to work with him as much as he, his time will allow. So again, if you need anything from me, Chief, from whatever to whatever, from A to Z, just reach out and I'll do whatever I can to assist. Thank you for all you've done for us, for you to do.
Thank you, sir.
My own. Chief, I would like to, to say you're leaving a big footprint in the sands of time. Because the time you were there, everybody knew that we had a good fire chief. All your work you've done with young people. But I would like to thank your wife and family because we thank you for what you've done, but without them. And supporting you and taking care of you, we wouldn't have had you. So we want to give a big shout out to your wife and family. And your, I know your father too, and your mom. And we want, want them to know we appreciate you so much. Leave your phone number. Thank you.
If you don't have it, Mr. Brown, Mr. Holmes has got it. He'll be sure to share it with you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, could I, could I speak?
Yes, sir.
First, a couple of words about JR. I'm now preaching to the choir, I talk to the commission, but for those of you who may not know. JR has been more than just a fireman or a fire chief to the city of Palaca. I think epitomizes what a true public servant is. If you've ever had occasion to call upon JR in whatever context it might be with regard to anything within his area of expertise. Of course, he thinks almost everything is within his area of expertise. You'll find, you'll find that he's giving, always willing to help. Never a conditional help, but always he's full in. And that's, that speaks not to just the fire related issues or rescue related issues. But as you know, with the COVID pandemic and the need for us to look at other aspects of public safety and pandemic control and infection control. Chief Grimes was, was always there whenever anyone needed it. And I think that was true in the county might have some need for advice as well. We're certainly sorry to leave him, but I'm excited about one aspect of his leaving, and that is he's staying in the community. Which I think is very important for the community. And he also is going to open up some opportunities for us to have some, I believe, some cooperation and partnerships with the county that I don't think the city's ever had before. They are and I've had some conversations. And of course, I understand it's going to take some buy-in from you and from the County Commission. But I think there are some things that are possible in terms of some cooperative efforts that would be good for the citizens of Putnam County. And, and it won't be that radical or drastic. I'm not talking about consolidation or anything like that. I'm not there. But I'm just talking about some, some cooperation that makes sense from a lot of different, from a lot of different viewpoints. So with, with that in mind, JR, you know, I appreciate everything that you've done for us and that I think you're going to need to do for the citizens. And we're, we're excited to see where you go from here.
Thank you so much, Mr. Holmes.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could for one second, as the commission knows. We are in the midst of a search for a new, a long-term replacement for the chief. In the meanwhile, we're fortunate to have one of the captains that has been at the department for many years. Chris Taylor, who may be on the line, I think is on the line now. Who, who I've named as interim chief to, to, to take the reins until the process of our selecting a replacement chief has, has transpired. And so Captain Taylor, I think is on the line. And if so, he may want to just introduce himself to, to all of you. He is. That's Captain Chris Taylor, who's on the line right now or on the Zoom call right now.
Okay. So Taylor, you want to unmute right this time? And let you close out the comments.
Yes, sir. I'd like to thank the commission and the city manager and his staff for allowing me to step into this position. It's, it's going to be tough replacing JR, but we're going to get it done. And it's going to be nice to cooperate with him on the other side of the street. I'd also like a big shout out to Brett Myers for running our Palaca High School program. And he's doing a great job over there. And we're going to have that come to fruition with our fire service training at the high school. So I think that's going to be big for us. It's something that JR started as well. And I think that we're going to continue it on and work with the county there as well. I think it'll be big things going on. I appreciate the opportunity.
All right. Thank you. And Chief Grimes?
Yes, sir.
Any words of wisdom as you depart us? And again, thank you for a job well done for 16 years.
Well, I do appreciate all the kind words each and every one of you said. Just know that I love you. I spent the better part of my fire service career there with you guys. I couldn't ask for a better, better team to have worked with all this time. I think you're in great hands. I've had several good conversations with Mr. Holmes. I think he's right on the right pace with us. I think Chris will do, or interim chief Taylor do a great job for you. I thank you for all your support you gave us all these years. Commissioner Moore, I'm not going anywhere. Maybe I can get in the Santa suit, you know, sometime around Christmas for you guys. I don't plan on going anywhere. Hopefully, I can still join it. Just so you know, that, that was a spawn from our, our local firefighter union that did all that fundraising and, you know, getting that program started. And I hope it continues in the future. But I'm excited. I think there's a lot of things we can do together. So as Mr. Brown always said, we're better together. So we're going to continue down that path. And I, I'd just like to thank all y'all for everything you've ever done for me in my career. And I do really, surely appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief. Moving on in our agenda. We have listed a water treatment plant update, but I think we have, we have a special guest here with us today, Mr. Fred Handy. And Mr. Handy, we'll turn it over to you in lieu of our update.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners and everyone else on the, on the, in the meeting. My name is Fred Handy and I'm a drinking water circuit rider with the Florida Rural Water Association. Some of you may be familiar with our organization, but for those who aren't, we are dedicated to assisting cities with their drinking water systems, wastewater systems. We train operators, we train administrators. We work closely with the Department of Environmental Protection and the U.S. EPA and Department of Agriculture. And many other government organizations to. Complete our mission for helping cities provide clean, safe, healthy drinking water to its, to their customers. We have a annual conference every year in August that we hold at Daytona Beach where we train operators and administrators. And we provide new information on, on new treatments, new technologies. And we also host a luncheon during which we present, recognize special efforts by municipalities, employees that have gone above and beyond. And normally, like I said, we, we present these awards at, at, at the conference. But for obvious reasons, we didn't have a conference this year. And so one of your employees is being presented with an award and that's what I'm here to do for, for, for that. And your, your superintendent of drinking water, Kayla Wiley, is being presented with the Florida Rural Water Drinking Water Operator of the Year Award. For the work she's done in helping the city improve its drinking water, which I, I know for a fact has been done. But also for a lot of very innovative treatment, technology sampling that she's doing right now. It's helping a lot of water systems throughout the state of Florida. Not a lot of people know about this, but she's, the work she's doing is helping other systems come into compliance. Reduce contaminants in their water. So, so it's very important work. So what I wanted to do is, we wanted to present this award to Kayla. It's for dedicated and outstanding contribution to the city of Palaca for the year 2020. Here's the award right here.
Make sure we give her a round of applause. Come on, Kayla needs to come into the picture here and get officially presented to her.
Yeah, go sit down.
Thank you.
So Kayla, you want to tell them what your original speech was about?
Can I say no to that? Because it wasn't nearly as exciting as this. The original speech I was going to give was just an overall update on what we're doing at the water plant. And some of the testing we're doing to, like you said, reduce the contaminants in the water. And come into compliance and well within compliance and implement some new technology that hasn't been used like this before.
And then you were surprised.
And then I was surprised and had to create a whole new speech very quickly, but I've now forgot because of this one.
So congratulations. The floor is yours. Anything you want to say?
Thank you for the opportunity and the award. Left me speechless. I don't know. I'm speechless. So just thank you for the opportunity and the opportunity from the city to do the work I'm doing. And hope we make a difference for not just us, the city of Palaca, but a lot of other systems as well.
And so Ms. Wiley is also a testament to the fact that. Diversity is critical to the growth of, and the growth of any entity. And she's a shining example of what happens when opportunities are given to people who truly deserve them. Just for the record, tell them how young you were at the point that you became superintendent.
If I remember correctly, I was 22.
And how many females had ever served in that capacity before you?
None that I'm aware of.
Exactly. She's a trendsetter and she's a history maker. And we salute you for your efforts and for now being recognized statewide for your work.
Thank you.
And, and again, just congratulations. Give her another round of applause.
Thank you, thank you.
Well deserved. Any comments from Mr. Griffith or Mr. Holmes?
Jonathan, are you going to speak? Do you want to say anything, Jonathan?
Yeah, just a few things. Kayla does a really great job of tooting her own horn, but I will say a few things that she is working on. And I guess it would kind of be an update. I had the privilege of riding with Kayla last week to Cedar Key, not for a fishing trip unfortunately. But we went over there to see what we will potentially propose to the City Commission and to D E P to bring us back into compliance, which is granular activated carbon. It is working for them right now. They just got their first batch of THM test back and they were within compliance. And that was with some issues in flushing. So we expect to see some improved results over the next couple of months. Kayla has been very integral in what I have been pushing to get accomplished, which is the rehabilitation of the distribution system. I would not have as good an understanding of where the problem areas are without what she does with the testing and what she knows about our flushing system. So that was one of the things that I kind of put in her nomination. But the, the biggest accomplishment is what she's been able to work with, where we're water and for the Department of Environmental Protection with all of this testing that she's doing in regards to granular activated carbon.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Holmes?
I just want to say that it's rewarding and, and certainly satisfying to see people in, in our little organization here in Palaca. Receive statewide recognition for achievements that are above and beyond. It's kind of just reminds us that you don't have to be a big city or a big entity or a county to have talented. And, and extremely competent individuals working for you. And we're just privileged to have, have some, and Kayla's certainly an example of that. And maybe, you know, just standing above, above most others in her field. So I thank her and thank Jonathan for nominating her. And, and I, I wish that I could take credit for being the one who hired her. I can't, but whoever that was that showed great foresight. And, and so I just, I just want to add my thanks to those that have been expressed by everybody else.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore?
Oh, absolutely. I'd like to really commend their own, the reward receiving for, on the water quality for the city of Palaca. I mean, we've taken a number of hits as it relates to our water lines or whatever. So this is just a true testament as to what we're doing. uh, as it relates to our water lines or whatever. So this is just a true testament as to, uh, what we're doing uh, as, um, of the body of the city of Palaca and the people that are, are making these things happen for us. So I'd like to thank Kayla for her dedication and commitment, uh, and, and her, her intelligence around water and everything else and, uh, just bringing awareness to the city and what we're doing good. So I want you to continue to, um, that great work. And anything that we can do to assist, to help you in that, in that respect, please let us know.
Vice Mayor Brown, I see you're muted, so I know you've got something.
Yes, because there's another female. Makes me very happy to see that we are equal opportunities employees. Uh, the city of Palaca wasn't always like that. It was covered with males. Now they've opened the doors and everybody gives. And they, I think they believe what I say, we're better together. And it was wonderful to have Mr. Griffin, um, have the insight to nominate her because it's wonderful things going on all the time. We were one of the first cities to not put pollution into the river. And we contribute to, a lot of us contribute to what goes on statewide. For those people who think the city commission in Palaca does not do anything, I, I take you out of my car because I'm very proud. We see names and of our people who have been active in the fire departments and our police departments and water sewer, all our departments. And I want to thank all of the people that work for the city of Palaca, no matter what they do, because they make our city shine. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Two would like to say thank you and congratulations, um, and way to go for representing for us younger constituents of Palaca. This is a prime example of how you can, um, succeed and be successful right here from Palaca. Um, so I hope that you be a shining example to other young people around this community to stay local, um, get the knowledge that you need, stay local and make change local.
You're no longer a younger citizen.
Yeah, that's what I was about to say, Mayor, because, uh, Commissioner Campbell, he's been on the commission for now almost six years now, so I just wanted to add that at least.
He's quickly losing that tag, Kayla.
I'm still allowed to be in the, uh, Palaca Young Professional, so therefore.
So, so again, Mr. Handy, thank you so much for working with the city of Palaca and your continued efforts here. We also want to make sure we continue to celebrate Kayla Wiley and her wonderful accomplishment. Again, congratulations, uh, on your achievement and we are just excited to have you be a part of this team and to continue to make history. Next up is public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes. No action will be taken on topics of discussion. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment, please dial three eight six three two nine zero one hundred or dial, or you can also chime in through our chat on our YouTube live. So again, three eight six three two nine zero one hundred. I have one caller on the phone right now and that is Diane Lincoln-Geyer. And so we're going to go to the lines now. Hello caller?
Yes, I'm here.
Ms., Ms. Lincoln-Geyer?
Lincoln Auger.
Lincoln Auger. I'm always destroying names here, so can everyone hear? So Ms. Lincoln Auger, can you go ahead and give us your comments at this time?
Yes, uh, so my name's Diane Lincoln Auger. I am the Director and COO of Shining Light Peer Services. Uh, Shining Light is a nonprofit recovery community organization due to Putnam County. Our mission is to empower adults and families living with substance use disorder by providing non-clinical peer-run support services to promote personal recovery through socialization, education and self-advocacy. We have a variety of services ranging from individualized recovery planning to community education and different recovery groups using evidence-based practices. We are a peer-led and peer-run organization supported by the Department of Children and Families, the Association of Recovery Community Organizations and the Peer Support Coalition of Florida. Shining Light has been helping individuals and families in our community for two years and we're happy to announce our new drop-in center located at thirty seven oh one Crow Avenue in the Crow Point Plaza next to Flowers by Melanie. Our vision for Shining Light is to bring a face to recovery to Putnam County and show others that recovery is possible. We're excited to be here. We look forward to future, to future partnerships and I will put all of my contact information in the comments.
Okay, we're looking forward to it. And just for the record, so we can have it for those who won't reach the comment, what's the number to Shining Light? That they can best reach?
Yes, it's nine zero four five zero six nine six eight two.
One more time.
Nine zero four five zero six nine six eight two.
And again.
Nine zero four five zero six nine six eight two.
Thank you very much and we are so glad to have Shining Light be a part of the Palaca community. And we're hoping that we can get together. Let's get you in contact with City Hall so that we can coordinate a grand opening celebration for you at your new location.
That would be amazing. Absolutely. So will somebody contact me from there or what, what it seems like moving forward?
Okay, we can have someone contact you. We'll, we'll have someone contact you. We'll coordinate it together and, um, we'll get it and we'll chime in with the chamber and make sure we get your grand opening celebration set up.
Thank you so much. Looking forward to the partnership.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment? Do we have anything in the chat?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Nothing in the chat. And I have nothing on the phones. So at this time, we're going to close public comment. We're moving to item three of the agenda, which are considered agenda. We've got three items on the consent agenda. A resolution twenty twenty R eighty-eight authorizing execution of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Palaca and the Small Business Development Center. B is acceptance of resignation of planning board member Robert Bob Moody and C is appointment of city manager Don Home as the city's representative to north, to Northeast Florida Regional Council Board of Directors. Is that a, is that a request to pull item A? Well, it's kind of. So there's a request by Vice Mayor Brown to pull item A. And so are there any other items on the consent agenda that you wish to have removed? Seeing that, I entertain a motion.
Motion accept.
There's a motion to approve items B and C. Is there a second?
Second.
Second on the floor, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Oppose. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item A, resolution twenty twenty R eighty-eight authorize an execution of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Palaca and the Small Business Development Center. And I, I think Vice Mayor's question was, just to kind of give an idea as to what was going on with S, with SBDC. And, uh, I don't know if, do we have Ms. Lynch on the phone? Yes, we do. And we also have Ms. Donaldson. Uh, before they go into what they're doing, I, I would like to say that SBDC has been a very integral part of what's going on in the city. They've done an excellent job. Uh, we have been able to really, I, I think, um, once we were able to have conversation to, and talk about expectations, they exceeded that. Uh, they worked closely with businesses during the pandemic recently. They got a number of businesses funded for both PPP loans as well as the, the EDIL loans. And so, uh, and they're also have been, um, assisting in other areas with the county as relates to, uh, coronavirus, to the coronavirus act and funding that's come out and been educating a lot of businesses, particularly during the pandemic, but even prior to that, giving us metrics on businesses and also spending tireless hours coming in here, uh, working with small businesses as well and mostly in Palaca. Uh, when we look at the county, look at the county numbers, the majority of the work is in the city of Palaca. And I think by having that additional, uh, geometric in place, it allows us to be able to truly see just how much, how much work has been done. We've had recognitions for, uh, Ms. Lynch since that time and the work that she has done. They've also put on workshops and they've also assisted us in places that aren't even in the contract. And so I'll be the first to say, um, that it's been a job well done by SBDC. And if you guys want to add anything, either Ms. Donaldson or Ms. Lynch, go right ahead.
Yeah, they don't need anything. This is the same thing that we've been doing with them in the past that we are doing again.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I wanted to know.
Yeah, so I don't know if you could hear her comment, but she said she, they don't need, she just had a question on that. Um, and so, but.
I make a motion that we accept A.
There's a motion by Vice Mayor to accept A. Is there a second? There's a motion on the floor in a second. Uh, Ms. Lynch, Ms. Donaldson, if you want to go ahead and say something quickly?
Well, all I would like to say, um, Mr. Mayor is thank you so much for your support. Um, I don't think there's any time in the history that I can remember in the SBDC that's ever been more important than it is right now. Um, you know, we, we see so much demand and, and I just want to give a shout out to Cheryl Lynch. I mean, Cheryl is, is a star of our program and her, I think you can see from the report, her satisfaction rating is a hundred percent. You know, she gives everything she has and, and the number of bridge loans, state emergency bridge loans that were given out, um, in the county were over much larger counties all around the state. So she was calling small businesses, letting them know that that help was out there and then working the PPPs and the idols and, and, and I just want to say during COVID, you know, we've had to adjust in the SBDC, but some of it has been for the better. Because of virtual assistants and webinars, we're reaching clients with all of our expertise all over our eighteen county region, not just in a one county with Cheryl. We're bringing Cheryl all of our resources. So, um, it's been, it's been a yeoman's job for the, you know, last six, seven months and, and thank you to Cheryl. She has Putnam County and the city of Palaca in her heart and she works hard for the small businesses there.
Yeah, let's give, let's give Ms. Lynch a round of applause for the work she's done. Are you Cheryl?
Thank you, everybody. Um, just want to let everybody know they're talking about a second round of PPPs that are getting ready to come out, but there is a set aside of twenty-five, um, billion, I think it is, or million for specifically small businesses with ten employees or less. And that really covers a lot of, a lot of our businesses within Putnam County. So spread the word, keep spreading the word, have them call me. I'm available to help them through the whole process. And if they need additional monies, their idle monies have ran out, they can ask for additional funds that way too, through the SBA. So those are two opportunities where funding is available and the county grant is still open. The county is talking about raising the amount or giving additional funds for those that have already been approved. So again, if you need funding, you need assistance, you need anything, we've got tons and tons of resources out there to help.
And that's for, that's for nonprofits as well as for-profit organizations.
Correct.
So again, thank you again for all your work, both to you ladies and to SBDC. And we are excited about the continued relationship. At this time, if there's no other comment from the commission, we will go ahead and have a vote. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Motion carries unanimously. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do.
Next up, item number four, establishment of a revolving loan fund. Vice Mayor?
Um, I, um, asked to be, to bring this back up. You know, my time is short and I would love to see this done. If you watch the news, you find that almost everybody now is trying to push to reestablish or get businesses going, economic development. We've been trying to do it for a long time. And I'm, I'm told, and I guess American brings us up to date if he has anything else that they're looking for doing the business incubator. Um, doing the, what they need to do to show that we do need one. Um, the revolving loan fund is one that I don't think we'll have a hard time starting because we've had, um, a grant given at one time. I don't think anybody, I don't know if anybody got it or not, uh, maybe one person. It was to help people start businesses where they lived. Um, they have that down somewhere. I gave you a, um, a packet last week of places that had it going. Most of them are in the, um, in a state, but I think it's necessary for us to bring it home and do it home because we're where the people are and we, we know the needs of our community a lot better sometimes than other folks do. If we can get, uh, it done, the way, um, I think that we can secure funds is we have all these businesses in town and, uh, they have, they have foundations. I've already approached, um, a couple of people and some of them with the, um, the cars, Ford Foundation, Chrysler Foundation. We ought to be able to, to talk to all these people who do computers, Comcast, the banks are supposed to invest in our community. They tell us that they are doing it, but they could do it on a much larger scale. I think that, uh, we need to get maybe a committee together. I call it a think tank to kind of get it started, but I would like to see it be like our CRA that the city commission has a big part in it and okay's the, the monies that go out to help folks. I have not got any, um, we can't talk to each other, so I haven't gotten any feedback for any, from any of the commissioners and the mayor, but I would like to, um, have some from, from them because I'll be gone in a few months and it'll be left up to them to carry this ball. So, Mayor.
Any comments from the commission? Any comments from the commission?
Nobody's saying anything. It's, it's necessary for us to.
Vice, Vice Mayor, Commissioner Bourne was trying to say something.
Okay, good.
We can't hear you, Commissioner.
I think we were all in support of, um, that effort in terms of, um, getting it started. I think what we need to do is just, I think there's already, um, a ninety-three thousand dollar, um, grant that we were, um, of, of funding that we received in order to start and to initiate that process. So I think the ball is being rolled and, uh, we just got to continue that effort, I think. So if I'm wrong, please help me.
Okay, the revolving loan fund is separate from the, um, that, that grant that we got. That was for the, um, business incubator that I had been talking about for years. But it will connect somewhere down the line. What this does, if most of you, some of you, you want to have a small business, you know what it takes to get it started. I'm not talking about great big ones to start for folks, but, um, they had a mini loan in Europe and they gave it to women and they put three of them together. And they reminded each other of all the paperwork they had to turn in when they needed to pay bills and did all kinds of stuff. Uh, a loan of five to ten thousand dollars to help a young person or an older person or to aid with a business. Help them get the lights on, uh, water, they move it into a building, pay, pay welfare for two months. Somebody thinks they could help do to establish business. Um, we need to have, I call it a think tank, somebody sit down and look at it. Some of them probably would, um, before we get the business incubator started, some of them would probably need to have some classes and assistance. We have our banks that say that they will do that for us to help us because it helped them. Um, there are a number of places we can turn. The, the, um, regional, um, not regional planning council, the, uh, Department of Agriculture has a revolving loan fund. I brought all the information back here when Mr. Bush was here. I thought we were gonna get it. They, um, let money, no money to cities and they had to. I thought we were gonna get it. They um, let money, donate to cities and they had to pay the money back plus one percent. And then they could add a, a little to, or sum to it and those people would, uh, those people were able to get loans that they could um, achieve and start their, and start or or upgrade their business. It's, it's very important because I know minorities and women especially, it seems it's hard for a bank to say that um, they don't need money. And if we have a source, that source can be built on. And I just want to see us do it. And we probably will wind up eventually if it gets good enough, having, if, if somebody come in and uh, and handle it or be a director for it so that we can get it started. Um, if we could appoint a committee to help look into it. I've told you, I talked to um, Mr. Sloan and um, he's talked to um, his right-hand guy.
If you can um, so Vice Mayor, this is my suggestion. Uh, I, I think the uh, Revolving Loan Fund is an excellent idea. I've seen it work in places like Fitzgerald, Georgia, which is very similar to Palatka and it's really a microloan system. Um, and I've watched them take a three hundred thousand dollar revolving loan fund um, with nominal interest rate and create sixty-five businesses in their community. Um, but they used a, and they funded their own Economic Development Director for that particular position out of that revolving loan fund and what was being created within the city. Uh, but I think the, the, the critical piece now is being in the middle of a pandemic, I think more than anything, the, the right direction for the city to go in at this point, as we address this with all the unknowns from the budget and the things that are out there, would be to put together a workshop uh, to bring in external partners like SBDC, to bring in external partners like the businesses that you've named. And actually, uh, as well as the local banks, uh, I just sat on a workshop along with Mayor Messam, Wayne Messam out of Miramar, uh, with BBIF, which is a, a local um, finance institution that was created by government for the purposes of um, increasing the number of minority businesses within the state of Florida. Um, and Anas Long, who's the director of that business, they also have um, a multimillion dollar um, mi- microloan system that they have in place to assist in the creation of businesses in Palatka is one of their target areas. And so I think we've got a lot of external partners in place. Um, with your blessings, we can try to coordinate a meeting uh, virtually, a Zoom meeting, I think SBDC uh, between Ms. Donaldson and Ms. Lynch will be excellent partners for us as well. They've got relationships with a lot of financial institutions like One-on-One Financial as well as the SBA to start to work towards that. Uh, the USDA incubator money, um, in essence is different from what we're talking about, but there are additional resources that are out there for business development in rural areas. Uh, Wealth Watchers has been looking at that as well, and I think that we can bring all those partners together and we can start to put together succinct plan um, on that. And I can just tell you, the only, the only concern that I would have is just the fact of the unknowns that we have as we're dealing with the pandemics. Um, but making sure um, that we cover our bases from a budgeting standpoint with the city first and foremost, as we begin to start to try to build new businesses. And I think that tapping into entrepreneurial spirits and giving a hand up for people to start new businesses um, is critical as long as there's an educational component that's involved in it as well, which allows those businesses to be able to sustain. And so um, I, if, if we've got blessings from the commission, um, we can try to schedule that workshop um, and try to move that forward between now and January.
Uh, I hope you'll do it before January.
I mean, Ms. Vice Mayor Brown, you're in the middle of a pandemic, I think.
I know.
Getting the ball rolling as opposed to pushing the ball fastly down the road without a plan. I would rather.
Well, I would like to have a workshop and.
That's, we know you got a few months left, but let's just try to get the ball moving before we throw it down the hill with no direction.
Well, that's what I came back to you all to do. We need, I've been looking for sources and I have somebody who said that they would put up some matching if we could find. And they're looking for a corporation, they have a corporation in mind that might help to get us going it. But we do need the workshop so that we could uh, talk about it.
And unless you're moving, unless you're gonna move out of Palatka, you can still spearhead this effort even in retirement.
Well, I just would like to see my, I guess it's in my blood. My, my grandparents came here because they thought it was a good place to start their businesses. And I had a grandfather, if he'd have lived, I probably wouldn't have had to work anymore, but he had the funeral home, a cemetery, grandma had a hospital. He had started insurance, a little insurance company of his own and he had bought tables, chairs and and typewriters and was getting ready to start a um, business school when he passed away. And he was, my family has always wanted to help people. They helped send people to school and do a lot of things and it's in my blood and I, I want to see it before I leave. Just, I'll say it that way, not the commission, that we have something set up that anybody who really has a good mind and, and good spirit and firing a bell, it gives a chance to start a business if they can do it.
Let's see, and we've got organizations like um, you, you had the downtown organization that came together uh, in conjunction with the Studer Group to do the twenty, do the twenty-five thousand dollar business challenge, which was kind of along the same lines. There's a concept in place, there's an application in place, and so you've got some frameworks there. Uh, we just have to get all the partners together to make it happen, but just remember that we are in the middle of a pandemic. And once we figure out what the numbers are, uh, on what are, on what happens with the impacts of our budget from all the things that have gone on during the pandemic, it gives a lot more certainty as to how we can move certain things forward just for the coming months. Doesn't mean that it won't happen, but we just got to make sure that we also do it with the, a mind that there are a bunch of unknown variables as it relates to how funding is in our city. And so we will definitely, with, seems like by consensus, uh, Mr. Holmes, we can start to coordinate that. Um, I've got a list of external partners, including those that she mentioned, that we can put that in place. And so I, I definitely think it's a priority and we can make that happen.
And ask the rest of the commissioners if they have somebody who are the tech people. We need to get in touch with um, all those tech companies, they have big money and if sometimes, Palatka didn't get a lot of stuff before the eight, because they never asked for it. And when they woke up and started asking, CDBG money came in and, and they rehabbed a bunch of houses and did a whole lot of things. We found out what it was, was if you don't ask, you don't get. And people got where they, they didn't know Palatka, but once they looked up, we got so much CDBG, they changed how, how much money you could get for a project. So, we need to just be mindful if we ask and work it out.
We got, we got you, but if we don't move this agenda, your retirement is gonna be here closer than you think.
That's good.
So, moving on. And so again, uh, is the commission okay with moving forward with the workshop, bringing the external partners in?
Absolutely, mayor.
Okay, we got, we got affirmation from Commissioner McCaskill, got thumbs up, Commissioner Boreham, Commissioner Campbell, you in agreement?
Yes, I am.
I, okay, we're gonna move forward, Mr. Holmes. We're gonna, we're gonna put those lists together so that there is no violation of sunshine. We'll go ahead and move forward from that standpoint. And we'll get everything in place. And so we'll let you be the conduit for, uh, and we'll coordinate together. And Vice Mayor, if you could just give your list of contacts to Mr. Holmes, then I'll start to call the rest of the folks and get it organized for you.
Okay, you probably need to have a direct call of the banks from you, mayor.
I got you. We'll make it happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your wish is our command. We got you. We're gonna make sure these last four months are, are taken care of. All right, moving forward. Uh, Mr. Ray, you've been sitting here waiting for a while. Moving on to item number five, which is discussion and directional request to release the city's interest in the real estate located at three eighteen Osceola Street in Palatka. That's the former site of the Lions Club. Uh, Mr. Holmes, you want to take this one and then let Mr. Ray come on board?
Yes, sir, I'm happy to, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, to, uh, I guess cut to the chase on this. In nineteen sixty-six, the city of Palatka deeded a parcel of property to the Lions Club uh, with a reverter clause in the deed. The reverter clause essentially states that if the property ever ceases to be used for a Lions Club or for Lions Club purposes, then it will revert back to the city of Palatka with the understanding that the Lions Club would have the ability to remove the, any improvements or up pertinences placed on the premises. Um, the, it's come to my attention that the Lions Club actually deeded the property at issue to um, Life Church, which is an organization with which Mr. Ray is affiliated. Um, but there was an acknowledgement that the city of Palatka had some interest in the property. We defined that interest by having a little title work done and uncovering the nineteen sixty-six deed. So uh, I think there is someone uh, on the meeting from the Lions Club and for Mr. Ray is present also. As the uh, as the memo that I directed to uh, the commissioners indicates, the city basically has a couple of different options. The city could release its interest in the real estate, the interest which it retained by virtue of the reverter clause that I just referenced. That release can be easily accomplished by way of a quick claim deed to Life's Church. That would uh, that would then vest Life's Church with the interest of the Lions Club and then the interest of the city. So, uh, unless there's some other encumbrance out there, they would then have title to the property. Or the city could uh, uh, insist on or enforce or attempt to enforce the reverter clause and take title to the property back. Um, if that occurred, the Lions Club would retain the, the right to remove the building that's on it. Quite frankly, in speaking with the Lions Club members, they, they probably wouldn't do that. Um, or I guess there's some other options in between. So since this does involve a conveyance of a real estate interest, uh, uh, with my opinion that it was a elected official. Matter on the agenda and uh, and I think I invited a representative of the Lions Club to, to be available. And I believe I saw her on the link earlier and I think uh, Mr. Ray and Melissa Ray from Life Church are also available.
Ms. Holland and Ms. Ray. So, uh, Mr. Ray.
Yes, sir.
Who wants to go first?
Sue.
I'll let Ms. Holland go first and then we'll come back to you.
I believe I unmuted my mic, so I hope you can hear me. Um, there's a, first off, a misunderstanding that we are a former, we have not dissolved our club. We are still using the club. Um, and Life Church has not come in to use the ch- the, the club yet. So I just want to clarify that. Um, um, we are not dissolving our club as of yet. We still have seven members. It's just that the membership is not growing. Um, and so we'd have no use for the building, being it's not growing and it's out of stancil and COVID. Um, and when we do continue meetings, the Life Church agreed to let us use the building when we do need it. So I just want to put that out there.
She's good, ain't she?
Thank you.
She knows what she did.
Henry Ray, it's on you.
Yes, sir. We, I just, I just want to thank all of you, um, you know, for your consideration and in continuing this community project that we've begun eight years ago, that God has really blessed, lives are being changed, and that's what we want to continue doing. Um, you know, with this building, we could, we could do a lot of things for, for Palatka. And uh, and um, that, that's, that's where we're at. Um, if you have any questions, feel free to ask, but we're just about, uh, we're getting ready to go in the jail right now and um, we're just about changing lives, you know, and, and it's working. People are seeing that it's working. Uh, there's no doubt about it. We just want to keep, keep that uh, momentum going.
So for a lot of folks who don't understand what goes on with your ministry, uh, and also with the work that you do throughout this community, uh, I, I can tell you that I am a fan of the work that you're doing in this community and it, it's truly a blessing to have you here. But can you just kind of give an ex, excerpt of some of the things that you have done and, and what your vision is for the building?
Well, my wife and I started Celebrate Recovery eight years ago. And this is for not just drug addiction, this is for any, we call it hurt habit or hangout. We have people coming in with PTSD, depression, um, overeating, gambling, I mean, you name it, people are coming in. Uh, we have anywhere from a hundred and fifty to two fifty every Monday night. Uh, we partner with the Putnam County Sheriff Department. Uh, we, we go in the jail on Thursday night. We're partnering with SMA Healthcare. Um, and what we're, we're really wanting to, to continue Celebrate Recovery Ministry and, and we're working on this Putnam County Recovery Development Organi- Organization um, where it's opening up, they call it a multiple pathways to recovery. So it's not just, um, you know, faith-based, but it's many different pathways because we want to be able to minister uh, to, to any and all needs of the community. And I understand that a lot of people are not gonna go after the same God that I go after, but we want to see them healed and their life changed. So um, transformation is what it's about. You know, with the transitional house beginning, um, you know, it's just, uh, we just want to mo- keep moving forward. Uh, maybe a resource center for Palatka. Um, that's one of the things we were thinking about, just having a, a clubhouse for meetings throughout the day where people can come in, have a safe place um, to hang out, you know, um, just be there for the community.
And so again, we, we definitely applaud your efforts. Uh, we've, we've noticed the growth in the ministry, the growth in your efforts as it relates to uh, combating drug addiction along with other addictions throughout this community. And we, we applaud you for that. And we also applaud the Lions Club and the decades of work that the Lions Club has done in this community and the number of people that have been touched by the organization. And we'd love for the Lions Club to come back in and really um, give a presentation so that we, so that we can maybe inspire some folks to join the organization as well. And so um, again, uh, that's just my comments. Are there any other comments from the, from the commission? I know Commissioner Boreham is very familiar with what goes on as well. Go ahead, Vice Mayor. Can you hear?
Yes.
Unmute, unmute. Unmute, you, you need to unmute.
Was, okay. Um, we have other properties that we have um, let people use and um, that's still the city's property. Is it possible that the property would come back to us, but we would let them um, use it as we have done other properties because if, if we give it to them, does it set a precedent for us um, with other properties that we have let vote to because we got the library? We got a bunch of buildings of ours that uh, put to good use. I'm for working on, on drug addiction and mental health things and all the good things that they do.
I have a question. I don't think we've had anything, if I'm, if I'm right, um, uh, City Manager Holmes, we haven't had anything to do with that building really for fifty-four years. Am I right? Since nineteen sixty-six?
My understanding, Commissioner, that um, the, the raw, the raw property, the undeveloped property was conveyed to the Lions Club by the deed that I mentioned earlier and that everything that's been done with the property since that time has been done by the Lions Club or others, not the city. Um, and that, and so in answer to your question, it's my understanding that the city has no investment in the, in the improvements to the property at all. Um, while Ms. Holland, I think, could probably better explain, she told me in our conversations that the building um, was uh, solid, but it was in need of, of uh, some modernization or fix-up. Um, so that, you know, whoever takes the building and uh, and, and attempts to use it is going to probably incur some expense in that process. Um, so yes, if, if you, what you're asking is essentially, I'm not aware of another scenario that's just like this one where the city conveyed property with a reverter clause. Uh, and uh, and so it is a little bit of a unique situation.
So, we only have two options here, right? With the uh, the city just releasing, um, releasing the property or uh, implementing the reverter clause. And I don't see where the city would be able to benefit from. And I don't see where the city would be able to benefit from enforcing the reverter clause. And also what I heard was the Lions Club is still operational. They have not really vacated or disbanded their organization. So it's still in essence active. So with, with the second option, we couldn't even do it reverted because the building is still vacant and the, and the organization is still active. But even if it was, I, I would probably not want to go that route. And if we got another agency that can come in and provide services to the community, I think that's, that's exactly what we would need, but that's just my opinion.
I've got one caller, I've got one caller on the line for this item. I'm going to go ahead and get, get some information from our resident historian. Ms. Kitchens? Ms. Kitchens?
Yes.
Want to give us some information? Take your name and address for the record?
Yes, at Leegre Kitchens, 1027 South 12th Street, Palaca, Florida. I'd like to request that the city go ahead and release its interest in the real estate located at 318 Offyola Avenue, Offyola Street, as per the first recommendation of the city manager, which is the city could evidence its relinquishment of its rights to assume ownership of the property, thereby allowing the conveyance from the Lions Club to Life Church to officially occur and be validated. I think this is a very worthwhile organization and we need more church-type organizations and recovery organizations in Palaca. And this property has always been wholly exempted. And I don't think it would be any hardship on the city for you to release your interest in it so that the Lions Club can beaded to Life Church.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Any other comment from the commissioner this time?
I just want to say I hadn't said much tonight, but I just applaud the efforts of Mr. and Mrs. Ray, what they're doing in our community and I support this process and, and hopefully that we can, you know, go ahead and move forward with, with the first option that we have.
I also would like to say, not to reiterate what everyone else has said. I'm in total agreement with what Commissioner McCaskill, Commissioner Borm, as well as Mr. Mayor Hill. Thank you for your work in the community. I've known individuals that have come in that facility and their life has been forever changed as a result of the ministry that Life Church has provided within this community. And I would like to see that continue. So I'm in full support of it. Entertained a motion to relinquish the, entertain a motion at this time to relinquish our interest. Now we relinquish our. Motion on the floor to second. Is there any questions called? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I see your thumbs up, Commissioner. Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Was that a yes for you, Commissioner Borm?
You got to unmute.
You're going to unmute.
I was having technical difficulties. I don't know what's going on. Something might be going on around it. But I was saying yes to relinquish the property.
Two thumbs up. And so, and so again, thank you both, Ms. Hollins and to the Rays. And so you guys can get out of Pastor Flag's office and you can.
Thank you, Mayor.
And so again, thanks for all your work.
Thank you so much.
And the crew. So again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
Moving on to item six is our public hearings. Our second public hearing for trim calendar year 2021, 2020 to 2021 final budget and milage rate. First up is Resolution 2020 R 89, which is setting the, the final fiscal year 2020 milage rate at 6.400 mils.
Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Palaca, Putnam County, Florida, adopting the final operating milage rate for the purpose of levying of ad lorm taxes for the city of Palaca, Putnam County for fiscal year 2020 to 2021.
Prior to adoption of the resolution, which is, which is to set the property tax milage rate, chapter 200.065, Perin 4, Perin D, Florida statutes requires the following statement to be publicly announced. The taxing authority levying this property tax is the City Commission of the City of Palaca. The rollback rate is 5.4818 mils per $1,000 of assessed value. The percentage increase is 16.75% higher than the rollback milage rate. The operating milage rate is to be levied is 6.4000 mils per $1,000 of assessed value. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
So move.
So motion by Commissioner Borm?
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner McCaskill makes the second. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? If you're here for public hearing, please dial 3290100 or enter your comments in the chat. 3863290100 or enter your comments in the chat on our YouTube live feature. Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion from the commission? All in favor, say aye. Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Resolution 2020 R 90, adopting the final fiscal year 2020 through 2021 budget for adoption.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Palaca, Putnam, of Putnam County, Florida, adopting the final budget for the fiscal year 2020 to 2021, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Borm?
Thank you.
Second by Commissioner McCaskill. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone for public hearing? The number's 3863290100 or you can enter your information in the chat. Seeing no one here for public hearing, do we have anything in the chat at this time?
Nothing in the chat, Mayor.
You just muted.
She said there's nothing in the chat.
There's nothing in the chat. We will now close public hearing. Are there any further discussion by the commission?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye. Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. All right, Ms. Becker. We've, we've passed another budget. No video this time.
Thank you all.
Moving on to item seven of the agenda ordinance 20 dash 05, amending Appendix A of the Fee Schedule of the Municipal Code of the City of Palaca as it pertains to fees and other charges related to Chapter 66, solid waste garbage containers, Chapter 86, utilities, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. This is the second reading. Ms. Krantz?
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida, amending Appendix A Fee Schedule of the Municipal Code of the City of Palaca as it pertains to fees and other charges relating to Chapter 66, solid waste garbage containers, Chapter 86, utility, and providing for severability and providing an effective date.
So move.
So motion by Commissioner McCaskill. There's a second by Commissioner Borm. We're now open the floor for public hearing. If you want to hear for public hearing, again, 3863290100 or in the chat on YouTube Live. 38632, 3863290100 or YouTube Live chat. Do we have anything in the chat?
No, sir, we do not.
Nothing in the chat, nothing on the phone. We'll now close public hearing. Is there anything else from the commission? All in favor, say aye. Aye, by voices opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to City Manager and Administrative Reports, Mr. Holmes. Mute it.
Probably was a welcome change, but now that we're back live. At the last meeting, we talked about staff coming back to the commission with some sort of alternative to Boo on the Avenues or something that might be seen as a event for children to, to take the place of the conventional Boo on the Avenues. Staff has talked in, between the police chief and Mr. Cutright and Ms. Deborah, the HR, this is Robinson. We've kind of come up with a plan or a thought that we might try to expand a little bit and change briefly or to some degree of the, the truck or treat project that, the concept that the police department had worked with in the past. But when I say change it, I mean, change it in the form that we would have a, a drive-through event at the mall and we think about having up to 10 stations at that event. And at each station, we encourage some cooperation and partnership with some local partners so that each station would be manned by a different organization or group. And we would dispense candy. We try to make it a little bit more than just a candy delivery system by maybe having some form of costumes or decorations. And the candy itself, we would try to dispense by PVC pipe shoots, which a local establishment has agreed to assist us in, in the fabricating. So there wouldn't be hand-to-hand contact from the, from the sponsors with the children. And as I, as I said, I think only our imagination limits what we can try to put together in this first go-around to, to make something to take the place of what, what's been lost. But before we go forward, needed to run that idea by the commission and see if the commission was in favor of it, supportive of it, you know, what your thoughts were. And if you get to give us the go-ahead, then we're going to go ahead and try to make this thing happen.
It sounded like a good idea to me in terms of the creativity that everybody, and the, and the forethought that everybody put into this. Like a lot of effort went in, in, in terms of how to coordinate the whole effort. And, you know, I'm, I'm pretty supportive of it at least.
I'm excited to see us to be able to move forward with this. This is something that my grandkids look forward to attending every year. So I'm excited that we're able to put something together and, like I said, do something for the kids in the community. Thanks.
I'm all.
Go ahead, Cam. Commissioner Campbell, go ahead.
I just said I'm all for it.
Okay, I'm, I'm for it too. I think it's a wonderful idea for the mall. But Mr. Sam Deputy says Boo on Avenue is for the little kids. Is it, are, are you going to do it the same way or everybody is going to have to go out to the mall?
At the last meeting, it was the consensus, as I understood it, that since we couldn't control admission to Boo on the Avenue, we couldn't enforce social distancing, we probably couldn't enforce masking requirements, and we couldn't control numbers that at this stage of our COVID pandemic, I didn't sense that the commission was comfortable with, with turning loose 2,000 to 3,000 people on the streets of St. John's Avenue. If we misread that, then we can back up. But my understanding was that the Boo on the Avenue was not something that the commission felt at this time was going to be, we could conduct safely. So we did invite the downtown merchants through Mr. Deputy to participate in our event at the mall. But for reasons that he maybe better can explain than I, they, they didn't indicate that they were interested at this time in doing that. So we would be, we would be enlisting other partners and trying to put something together for the kids. And since it's going to be a drive-through event, we're not trying to control the ages of the, of the, of the participants. We're going to be basically trying to service the car and whoever's in the car. But we feel like this way we can, we can observe COVID safeguards. Because the, the safeguards are going to have to be primarily observed by the sponsors. The people in the car won't be having contact within six feet with those of us that are dispensing the candy. So, you know, is it, you know, could it, could anything go wrong? But it's, it's an, it's an effort to try to be imaginative and do something and still observe.
I think it's wonderful that they got together and put their heads together and came up with something because kids expect something being done. I was asked the question by Mr. Deputy and I thought that I would bring it back to you all. But they were thinking about promoting it down, but we need the safety, I guess, now. And everybody can, it's pretty broken in the mall. So, thank you.
I think that if he can promote a drive-through event, which meets the satisfaction of, both of it, I think, satisfaction of our health department. I see Ms. Garcia may still be on the line. I won't put her on the spot right now. But I, I think we just need to make sure that we get some blessings from the health department as well as it relates to. Been thought of, but it sounds like we've.
Can you hear me, Carol?
To try to find a way to create safety parameters. And if, you know, Boo on Avenue can become a drive-by event as well, a drive-through event, and we can create the necessary precautions, I'm all for it. Ms. Garcia, I saw you unmute for a second.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, good. New, new speaker. So I, I'm actually going to share with you. I had requested some information and I just received it a day ago from the CDC. They have put together a package for COVID-19 and sort of daily coping throughout the holidays. So I will share that information with you and I'll also forward it to all the policy group members because several have asked for some guidelines and what would be the best practices. So I will be sending it to you right now.
Okay.
Perfect timing.
If we can, so my, so if it's okay with this commission, if we can look at making sure that we come back to our next meeting, our first meeting in October with, with some detailed plans as to how we make this work so that if it is a go, that law enforcement, the fire department, and everybody's in the proper places so that we can ensure safety as well as making sure we have enough volunteers in place to, to ensure compliance and just see how realistic this thing can be. Because the last thing I want to do is do anything that's going to run these numbers up. You know, we've, we've read about a couple of things in the paper as it relates to what's in place. Blacka High School is, has their game canceled this Friday because the Clay County team is quarantining for, for the next two games. And so we need to make sure that we just take the necessary precautions to protect our children and at the same time, try to create a mechanism which gives them an outlet. Got right, got anything?
Well, I spoke to Mr. Holmes about the Veterans Day Parade. We've been getting several phone calls about that and I'm trying to see if we can get an idea of, I mean, what the thought process on that coming up in November.
And we, let's get past, let's get past Halloween first.
Okay.
So, right now, we're living day-to-day on, on COVID numbers and we are an at-risk community and I, I just want to make sure that we cover these bases. And so we'd love to celebrate our veterans, but not at the extent of anyone's health. So let's, let's find out how you can create a socially-distanced parade, if there was ever such a thing.
I have none else.
Mr. Holmes, you got anything else for your report?
Oh, the only thing I was going to mention was Mr. Cutright, as, as usual, jumped in there and jumped on top of me there with the Veterans Parade. I was going to get to that. But I think the, the other issue was we're already getting comments about the Christmas Parade. So in all fairness to Mr. Cutright, he is getting inquiries. I'm getting inquiries. And as you know, people are indicating that they need more than a couple of weeks to plan these events. So, which is understandable. We understand everybody's anxious to try to put something together and move forward. We're just having to tell people that right now, we're not in a position to tell them that, that the commission's going to be comfortable with, with having the, the parade events. As you indicated, if somebody can come. As you indicated, if somebody can come up with some parameters as to how you social distance in a parade, and I'm not talking about parade participants, of course, they can do that, but I'm talking about the spectators. I guess that's something the commission could consider. But enforcing any guidelines as far as how the spectators social distance or safeguard, that's going to be a whole nother matter. I mean, I think it's practically impossible to enforce. It'd be pretty much a honor system where you hope that everybody's going to do something to try to, you know, try to social distance. But that's for the commission, I think, to to give us guidance. And if the commissions, if you have any thoughts about the Veterans Parade, which I think would be November 10th or 11th, Eddie?
11th, November 11th.
So, you know, if you have any thoughts about that now, or you want to look at our first meeting in October, I know they're going to be looking anxiously for some guidance, so they can start planning the parade or or advising people that they're not going to have it. We can wait on the Christmas parade, because, well, I say we can, that's going to be, I guess, Thanksgiving.
It's Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Right.
Wednesday, Saturday.
It's Friday, Thanksgiving. As you wait on, as we begin to look at it, I want you to look at, what's our death toll, Ms. Garcia, in Putnam County right now?
Unfortunately for us, thank goodness, and I think it's because we've all worked together. We have 39 deaths in Putnam County. We, where our positive cases are just crossed over 2,100 today. And I have to say, it's, it has not creeped up higher, because we are very working diligently with our school district, working diligently with other partners to be able to make sure that we find those positive individuals as fast as possible. Anybody with symptoms are triaged and excluded, so they don't go on to infect other individuals and and putting students in isolation. The good news is, is that the Polatka game will go on on Friday. They have, we have been able to help triage another team to be able to come play. And so we were happy that we were asked to help with that effort as well. So.
We, we will be leaning on you during the course of the next few weeks, trying to make sure that we comply.
I think the guidelines that I'm sending you will give you a really good template and some good guidelines to follow. And it's, and it's really, it's up to, I mean, you're, you've been very dedicated in making sure that people wear masks and put in Polatka. And and I think that that's what we're going to have to continue, is that is a first line of defense and probably do hand-washing stations everywhere we can. And then, and then go from there. I mean, I think it's, and then nobody show up sick. I think that's the the message that we have to do, is please, if you're sick, stay home.
Can I ask, Mary, can I ask you a question? Are there specific guidelines regarding parades in which you're about to send us?
I looked at holidays, and it looked, it had fireworks displays. It did have, I think, had items on parades. I have, I just received it, so it's really, I haven't had a chance to even read the whole item or print it. So you're going to get it hot off the press. I just got it late last night.
Okay.
So they've just put it out, so I'm sharing it with you all.
Okay. Well, let's see what, let's go ahead, and then, and we'll let Mr. Cutright and his team, along with Mr. Holmes, work on this thing, with especially events crew, with Mr. Fletcher and who, and the various chiefs, and we'll go from there. Mr. Holmes, you got anything else?
No, sir, I don't.
Okay, we're moving on to Mr. Cutright. And one of the things that we want to address, Mr. Cutright, when we've talked about this over the past few, Mr. Cutright actually put his reopening plan out, and one of the suggestions in his plan was to go to 50% capacity on our event rentals. We've had an opportunity to review the governor's executive order with Ms. Thomas as well. And I'm of the opinion that, you know, we should go ahead and start to reopen facilities at 50%. Mr. Cutright, Ms. Thomas, you got anything else you want to add? Mr. Cutright, it's on you.
Yes, well, we.
Hold on, one second, Commissioner Campbell had something.
Based on what you just said about the reopening plan, I'm all for it. But how are we going to manage to make sure that individuals stay within that capacity window?
Mr. Cutright has it in his plan, he can kind of explain it a little bit better.
What we're asking everybody to do is present us a COVID-19 measure plan in place to see what we do and make sure they stay within the capacity. We also plan to do spot checks. I mean, we can't confirm totally every every event, but we're going to pop up and make sure people are in compliance. And if they're not, we are going to shut down the event the best we can. But right now, all we can do is go into honor system. I mean, you can tell me you're going to have everybody in masks, you're going to tell me you're going to have 50% capacity, try to keep social distance at tables as a part of the program. We make sure we keep six to eight feet away and do the best we can with hand-sanitized stations and also washing stations. And other than that, we just got to pray.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I I echo that same sentiment that Commissioner Campbell had, you know, in terms of enforcing it. And I know that churches and other organizations are running at 50% capacities, as as well as restaurants, different things of that nature. So my only question again would be the enforcement side of it. And we know we're going to honor system and spot checking. But when we say that, some people might want to say the same thing about events or whatever. So do we have any, anything, I guess, from, I guess, from the the health department, if they had anything as it relates to parade, we need to look at that and see what we can do. Because if we say no to special events, how does that kind of go along with the facility rentals or whatever it may be? Which is, we can't control that environment a little bit more. But so I just, I just want to look at a little bit more in in depth as it relates to what we get from the health department.
So we have been able to work with some events, in particular items that had been planned for a long period of time, like weddings and, but those, as you are absolutely right, those are able to be controlled. I'm able to get a line list of everybody that is going to be a participant at the wedding. I have, they are set up stations to be able to test, measure. You know, you have to swear that you have no COVID symptoms, and they had to sign in. They had to have their temperature taken, and everybody was very compliant about that. But as you well know, I I've been at the waving end of the parades, and they are six to seven feet deep on, in the, in Polatka. And and it's a wonderful, wonderful sight. But I think that's a hard thing. I think I've had Santa Claus call me and ask me the same thing. So I think everybody's thinking about it at this time. So I think we just have to be cautious and and share your concerns with your citizens and then see if, and then read these guidelines and see if they give us some some ways to find some best practices. And then at some point, it's, you know, I keep having to say that this is the new normal, and I'm not really sure I like it. But 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 it's the way to get through it. At the same time, maybe we can plan something in coordination with the flu vaccination campaign. So I don't know, maybe there's something that we could do to make it attractive. But it'll take all of our efforts together to get it done.
Thank you, certainly appreciate it. And again, you know, I do support the effort that is being put forth. So I just wanted to get a little bit more clarification, but thanks, Ms. Cutright.
Yeah, I think one of the things that we got, Commissioner, is just the fact of trying to to start to move forward with some of the reopening plan. I think we've been extremely conservative and cautious in the way that we've approached reopening. And I do think that it's time for us to, as we move forward, to start to look at opportunities to see how our citizens fares, we do certain things. And so it's a lot easier to control a rental at the Bronson House or the Price Martin Center as opposed to trying to control especially events or or parade, for example. And so I think if we start out looking at how we manage event rentals, making sure that we've got a foolproof system as it relates to what's in place, then we can start to look at the opportunity as it relates to kind of dealing with some of the other things that may be out there. And so the whole key is just to start to phase things in in a manner in which we can control them. And as long as we make sure we put the adequate controls in, addressing the concerns of the commission as well as staff and of the health department, and following CDC guidelines as well as executive orders from the governor, I think we'll kind of be there. You know, when we look at restaurants in the 50% capacity, we've seen pretty good compliance around the city. And we've also seen quite a bit more compliance as it relates to masking of our citizens when they go into public places. You know, we've still got some folks who've kind of bucked the system. But I think overall, the majority of the people are now making best efforts. And I think that's all we can really ask for, and we just have to continue to make sure that we're consistent with our own rules, and we set the example for how we move forward. And so I definitely think your concerns are valid, as well as Commissioner Campbell, as we move forward. And I can tell you, you know, cultural resources has put forth, I think, a pretty solid plan. And I think they're continually to put the safeguards in place. And we've been, and so we've got some pilot studies kind of in place, working, seeing how some certain things work out.
Thank you, appreciate, yes, sir.
One more thing, one more thing, Mayor. If I may, I want to, Mr. Cutright, if you can make contact with me, I have a, actually, a list of questions that I would like to ask with regards to the reopening plan. Just some things that have been in the back of my, back of my mind with that, just to make sure that all of our bases are covered when it comes down to that, from the cleaning of facilities there and after, and things of that nature. I think those are some things that we need to make sure that are, that's at the forefront of the conversation.
As I reach out to you soon, this meeting is over with, Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. And just to point out information, he actually has an affidavit that each renter will have to sign along with their, that it's included in their contract, some additional language, so that they meet certain safety precautions that have been added. And so, anything else, Mr. Cutright?
No, that's it.
Okay, Chief Taylor.
Nothing more at this time, or?
All right, welcome aboard, in your new capacity.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Ms. Thomas?
Comment, though. The food drive that we had on the 23rd, I'd like to commend everybody, all the staff. It was a real big success, and I thought it was, you know, it was a really great event. So I just wanted to thank all the organizers. I guess that's a kudos to Mr. Cutright and his and his group, so thank you.
Definitely. Thank you for that one, as well as the other, the food drive was also held on on Saturday, the Saturday prior. But we definitely thank you, we thank Farm Share for coming into Putnam County, and definitely kudos to you, Mr. Cutright, for taking the lead on that.
I can't take the lead on it. We had a great team, Ms. LaFara Davis with the heart and soul, the Polatka PD Department with Captain Williams, even Keith Putnam Beautiful was in the Cavalry Missionary Baptist Church, the Family Life Center. So we had a wonderful team. So I I'll accept the credit, but it was not just me. We put this together through thought process a couple of months ago, and we finally pulled it off. And I, I want to thank the commissioner, city manager, some of the commissioners that showed up, and everybody came and supported us, because without y'all, we couldn't have pulled it off so smoothly. And I want to thank y'all for that.
So we're looking to do that in other places, looking to make it a continual event throughout the community. And we've got our contacts at Farm Share, as well as our external partners. There were about 20 community organizations represented at that, at that, at that drive-in. It was just a great opportunity. You know, it was scheduled for nine to 12, we didn't last to 10:30 with the food that was there. So that just tells us that there's a need. And again, great job. Anything else, Ms. Thomas? Nothing else. Mr. Griffith, where's the boat?
In the water. Nothing to report, sir.
All right. Mr. Fletcher, I see you on the line.
Yes, sir.
How are logistics going?
They're doing well. We've got a good, healthy supply right now, since things are getting back in in stock across the board. So right now, we're, we've got a decent supply, and we're still reaching out to all of our contacts in the city and outside the city when we do need certain items.
Okay, thank you. Chief Shaw, you've been quiet today.
Yes, Mayor, I am, but I had nothing to report on. Thank you to the commission, thank you to city manager in reference to handling the topic of trunk or treat. And thank you to all the commissioners for your support. We are looking to put together a very safe event, and we're looking at making sure we social distance as much as possible. Mary Garcia, if you could also send me that information as well, so I can, when I meet with all the other parties involved, we can make sure we have that to add to our plan.
And so, Chief, just for the record, which commissioner has the most fun at the trunk or treat?
Well, usually, without a doubt, it was Commissioner Borm. But I must say, I think Commissioner McCaskill came in last year and took that title.
So should I take that as a challenge for this upcoming year against Commissioner Borm?
I was taking, I was taking, I was voting for Borm, but I may have to go back and reconsider. So, next up, Ms. Becker.
Hi, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, just wanted to let everybody know that next week is the end of our fiscal year. In your packet, you have a report that is as of August 30th, or 31st, sorry. We, there are a lot of changes from that report. Just because we are at the end of the fiscal year, we're seeing a lot of those last-minute invoices come in. So a lot more expenditures being booked, and Ms. Tucker is working on reimbursement requests for our grants. Therefore, those revenues will be changing. We have some multiple projects that due to timing will be rolling forward next fiscal year. So just a lot of things happening in finance, but, you know, busy time of year.
Okay. Next up, Ms. Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of job postings right now. We are posting for the fire chief, our planning director, and our planning clerk. So if anybody is interested, those jobs are posted on our city website. You can email your applications and resumes to hr@polatka-fl.gov if anybody's interested.
And so, definitely, thank you. Mr. Mims.
Nothing to report, just trying to keep the zoning train and the building permitting train running from our, and we see almost every permit that goes through the county. It's gotten to be pretty busy. Happy to be here.
Okay.
That I am.
Ms. Grant.
Nothing reported this time, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Brown. Commissioner Campbell.
I have nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Commissioner McCaskill.
Nothing at this time, Mayor, thank you.
Commissioner Borm.
I just have a couple of things, should be pretty short. But we have, I've been getting a number of calls and different things as it relates to our continued Norris ordinance, breaches that we have from calling, and they said they called the police department, and sometime it spills over to the sheriff department in terms of people coming out and investigating those, I guess, nuisance issues. I know we got some things on the book, but we probably need to put some. We probably need to put something together as it relates, because I get this, some of the same people are calling. Uh, repeated times. And I know if we got reports from the uh Police Department or the Sheriff Department to. Understand and know what kind of uh quality of life impacts is having on on the community. What we're having is we have some people who are afraid to uh report on certain people. Uh, because of retaliation or whatever it may be. Uh, we don't, I I I don't think that people should be uh held hostage. In that respect. So. I would like the commission to help. Uh, let's craft something in a way to where. If we have repeat issues as it relates to Noah's ordinance, because we've had, we're having people who. Are uh getting engaged in, you know, could put the domestic violence, some of the things that. Um, occur, people are approaching the people directly and we just want to try to help reduce crime as much as possible. And some of these things, along with the pandemic, people are are short tempered. So uh, if we can do anything along those lines to kind of help. Uh, increase the quality of life for our citizens, I greatly appreciate the support. Um, I I have a number of calls that I've logged myself and I got the documentation to kind of uh share. Um, the other thing we have is our water lines. I know we're doing a great job as it relates to. Um, replacing water lines throughout our city. Uh, I've also gotten a number of calls. Uh, over the past couple of weeks as it relates to water line breaks and I have uh relate those to. Um, the city manager as well, yeah, and 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 ran it through him. But um. Some areas, um, there are repeat issues at two to three times per week. In the same areas. And I know we have some old water lines, two-inch water lines throughout uh our city. If at any any way possible, we can look at um, maybe reprioritizing. Uh, some of the areas that we've having repeat issues. Uh, example was like Napoleon Street that uh. We did with on last week uh with uh for a a great period of time. And I'd like to thank everybody who. Uh, helped work that area to help get those uh individuals water restored. Um, so if we can just kind of look at the master plan, I know we're moving from the water plant out, but uh. We might have to make maybe do some shifting. So get the commission support on that, looking at how we can um. Look at things and maybe reprioritize if we have to. So that's, that's all I have.
Um, if you can get with um. If you can get with Jonathan Griffith and Mandy Tucker on that. And start, so they can start to map it out. But the other thing is, so that they can keep, so that they can have it in place, make sure that you just direct them when they make the call to you. To three two nine oh one oh seven, so that it can be logged into the system. And that way, um, it'll all work together. And so um. You can still CC the city manager, but if you send them to three two nine oh one oh seven, then they'll make sure that the work order in place. So. The system will actually start to chart and map it.
Yeah, I I appreciate that, but they have been, they had already done that. I mean, and it was um, or. Something that had going on for uh the whole day or whatever. And um, so they. It was a apparent, supposedly apparent fix, but that never, I mean, it didn't uh result in. The end result that it it re ruptured or whatever. So they had another outage, about two outages that day. So um. That's just what I, what I had ran to. And Don is fully aware of what what went on or what have you. So, yeah, they, I, we, they, I I do direct the people. To make sure that they contact the uh right um and not contact the commission directly, even though a lot of people do that. So.
No, they do it, but I, but I, we just try to make sure we log it in too. And so I, that's kind of the direction I got from staff on that. And so just make. That way it kind of stays clean, even though you still do the next steps for you to make sure that you follow up on it. But we definitely appreciate that information. Got anything else?
Oh, that was it.
Okay, nothing, nothing for me tonight. I think uh we're moving this community forward. We've got businesses that are still inquiring. We heard about two more. During our chamber meeting. And so uh, we're excited about what's going on. And um. Again, kudos to everyone for working through the pandemic. Um, again, we got a thirty-six-year veteran. Who continues to try to push initiatives through before January of this year, of next year. And so uh. You know, Palatka, we're going to continually move forward uh in spite of all the things that we may have as. That could easily divide us. We're going to use those. We're, we're going to use those threats as opportunities for us all to come together and to create a better community. And so um. You know, we're excited, you know, we hate to C J R Grimes leave us. But we are, we are looking forward to new opportunities um to continually move Palatka forward and to. And to better extend our relationships to the county. And so uh, Palatka, just remember, we're better together. Commissioner Borum, close us out.
Well, I just wanted to um just command and thank um. Mrs. Chris Taylor for uh accepting that uh role of chief, uh interim chief. So uh, congratulations. And we certainly look forward to working with you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay. If there's nothing else before, is I entertain a motion to adjourn by consent?
Oh, move motion to adjourn.
Okay, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.